This is a special meeting that we will be going into executive session. Let me take the roll call here and then I'll look for a motion to move into executive session. Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Chris Herring is not here. John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swedlow is not here. Tom Benton.
Here.
Christina Larson.
Here.
And Eric Knowles is not here. Okay, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
So be it. Please turn off recording. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Welcome, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. We have a one particular item. Thank you. One item on the regular meeting agenda, which is 112 Main Street. And then we have, due to a technicality on the posting and listing, there are a couple of applications that we need to push to the next meeting. That one being item two, which is 672 Owen Oak Ridge and number 472 Park Street. So those will push to the next meeting.
And just to clarify, we're pushing those to a special meeting in May that we will decide the date on later, not the next regular meeting?
Thank you for the clarification. Correct. The balance of the meeting agenda stays as is. Okay. Let's take roll call for the meeting. Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Chris Herring. Chris is not here. John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swedlow, he's not here either. Tom Benton.
Here.
Christina Larson.
Here.
Okay. And these are all.
Eric.
Oh, sorry. And Eric. Eric Knowles.
Here.
These are all new items, right? Sarah, these are all new items, right?
Correct.
So we have Chris Herring and Alan Swedlow seated members are not here. So for these, for tonight, Tom Benton and Christina Larson will be seated. Okay. So first item on the agenda, this is a pre-application presentation to discuss the potential for a renovation and expansion of the structure located at 112 Main Street. Mr. Ritchie.
Mr. Radman, thank you. So this is 112 Main Street. It's up on your screen as well, and I've set out some packets for you as well. We were approached by Grant Stevens, Daniel McKeckren from Volterra Properties. There are contract purchasers to buy this particular piece of property, and they're in the middle of a due diligence period essentially. So they have basically another 30 to 45 days to kind of decide whether or not they want to move forward with this project. So what we mentioned to them is that you can come in front of this commission, you can do a pre-application here and see whether or not your particular project that you want to bring in for the development may be something the commission is either interested in, something they're going to say this is just not for us, and give us, or best case scenario, give us some sort of direction and advice as to the best way to approach it. Essentially, what we're trying to do is we're taking this building, as you can see in the front, you all know it's the one that's got the grates on the front of it. It's got roughly five storefronts in the, in the front of the building, and it has two and a half floors of office space above it. What the proposal is, is to add 12 residential units to this particular piece of property, leave the retail on the first floor facing Main Street, and add two, of those 12, two of those will be affordable housing units. In connection with the retail A-zone, as you all know, you're not required to have parking in the retail A-zone, but fortunately, we have like a really great backyard. If you remember, if you kind of come down East Avenue, that little alleyway area, and then you'll see there's a, that there's a parking lot that sort of faces out to that Chase building, Chase parking lot, where the meat market is now, the butcher shop is. So anyway, we're able to actually use that space and create up to 13 spots of parking in the, in the rear of that building. That will include essentially an underground parking on the property. So in order to sort of accomplish this whole feat, we would need to, at this point, it looks like have at least two to three text changes to the inclusionary zoning regulations. Specifically, those would be to allow residences on the first floor, because while we would leave Main Street retail, the rear of that building that we're building out, we would want to make those two spots in the back residential. So even though it's kind of at a higher level, there's going to be a garage below it, it's technically going to still be on the first floor. So we would ask for permission to do that vis a vis a text change, which I have in your presentation. And then the second part of it is that in the retail A-zone, you're limited to 750 square feet of residential space for each unit. So we would look to obviously increase that. And the way that I was thinking about doing it, and I talked with Sarah, the town planner, about this as well, is to just essentially say, if you're in, if you're doing an inclusionary zoning type of regulation, then the commission can make the decision as to whether or not to enforce that particular part of the regulation. So sort of take it out of the regulations, and you'll see that, I think it's on page 13. Oh, it's up on, oh, thanks. So it's up on the screen. It's on page 14 as to how we would do it. And then the last part of this is, what we want to do is try to create, the way this building sort of sits is that there's two floors, and then there's sort of an attic that comes down, and we want to pop up the attic and add a floor to that attic. Now, the height is still going to be under 45 feet, which is what the regulations say, but it, it's unclear whether or not we're at four stories now, or whether we're at three and a half stories now. Because, yes, we're adding sort of a half story to the top, because it's not the entire building itself, but the question is whether or not we've actually added a fourth, fourth store or not, fourth story or not. So that's something we sort of have to work through, as to whether or not that's considered just a half story because of the amount of space that we're, that's above that floor, or whether or not we need some sort of additional text change to allow for that to come up. It's important to the project and to the applicant as far as creating that additional space. I mean, we're essentially looking at 10-foot ceilings on the second, third, and fourth floors, which is really important on these residential units. I mean, I think, I was with Mr. Engel recently, and in Genovese project, they were talking about in Darien, how important it was to have the 10-foot. So it kind of resonated with me when they started to talk about that as well. So anyway, I, I don't, you don't need to hear more from me about it. Let me let Michael go through, the architect who you know from the Sanez project, go through sort of his plans and how he's thinking about these particular buildings and what it's going to look like. And then we'd love, obviously, to hear anything, I know this is the first time you're seeing this, but whether you had questions or comments today, whether you could give those to us next week, you know, that would be great. If you're like, I don't see this thing happening at all, that's fine too. I mean, it's not fine, but we want to hear that as well. Or if you had any other comments about the, about the project. So.
With permission, if I can make one comment now.
Sure.
Oh, yes. I will say on the record that I think the facade of this building now is probably arguably the least attractive one in town. Okay, I will say it.
True?
Okay, there, I've said it. And so most, any, any change would be an improvement, but I would note this is an historic building, and so that would be on my mind. In addition, as a historical fact, factoid, about a little over 100 years ago, the, a predominantly black Baptist church originally met here and is now Community Baptist Church, which is on Cherry Street. So there's a lot of historical issues around here. So the historical nature of the building sort of is on my mind when thinking about it, so I'll just leave it at that.
That's important, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
About the affordable housing component. Specifically, page 14, where it says, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Gasman. By meeting the affordable housing requirement, you're allowed to go to 45 feet and three and a half floors? I mean, you have to meet the affordable housing minimum regardless of that, correct?
That's, that's what it is, yes, that's what it is today. It's 45 feet and three and a half stories is what the requirement is in the retail A-zone.
So, so my question here, and Sarah, this may be for you, but is two units sufficient under our?
Yes, it's 15%.
It's 15, thank you. And then my third question relates to the third or fourth floor, where there are two very large penthouse apartments. Has consideration been given to turning that into three? Is it physically impossible?
That would definitely be doable. That's, and we're not, we're not fixed on the idea of just two. It seemed, because of the terrace on the Main Street side and a small terrace on the east side of the building, we thought for each unit to have some terrace space would be nice, but we initially were thinking of three units that floor, so that's doable. And at 13 units in total versus 12, two units of affordable is still meets the 15%.
We note also under rules, if you have an odd, it's every five is the breakpoint. So if it, if it's two, it's two fifths of a unit, you would have to write a check to the, I think, the housing authority.
Yeah. If you get to that.
It's in lieu of a physical unit, and you're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm surprised that you, you're so squishy about the definition of what is a story. It certainly, it's got to be defined in our regulations, right? What you're proposing is three and a half or four stories. If I ask Sarah Carey, will she tell me how many stories it is?
So we, we've spoken about this. We do have a definition for a story. It's not as black and white definitions as you would like them to be in theory. So it's essentially, our definition talks about area that has at least seven and a half feet underneath the rafters. But you know, it's always assuming that the roof is, you know, pitched, not a flat roof. So in theory, you could argue that anything that has just 50% of the floor area below it could meet your definition as half a story. You know, since it is preliminary discussions, I haven't formulated a full opinion on that yet.
Can I walk around in 100% of this half-story, or can I walk around in 50% of this half-story?
Well, it's 50% of the, of the, the floor below. So the story below, it's only 50% above that is the point.
We're only using 50% of that fourth story.
Yes.
So by that definition, you're, you're claiming.
No, sorry, I'm not right.
No, go ahead.
No, the square footage of the fourth floor is larger than 50% of the floor below, what we've shown in these drawings.
A lot more than 50, or marginally more than 50?
I think we've gone from.
Well, more than 50.
Well, more than 50, yeah. Yeah. We've got the square footage on one of these charts.
So I think it comes down to also, are we talking about height, or are we talking about stories? Because the height still is going to be underneath the retail A, 45 feet. So with the story with, the story with story, the story and the height, you know, what are we more concerned about as a, as a commission in the town? I mean, I think it's really the height more than the story. So long as we're staying under the, the height portion of it, you know, it should be sort of irrelevant what the story part of it is. And that's sort of where we were, if that's what the commission, if that's what they believe, you know, is what they're looking at from a height perspective. But I don't know, Michael, if you want to talk a little bit about the project now.
Good evening, Michael Tribe from PGA. And we start with just with the drawing number four, slide number four. We, we, we did look at some historic drawings, and there are some historic elements that we want to incorporate into, in the project, particularly the prominent cornice the building had, it's not there anymore. And then the punch windows, and we will want to kind of regularize the color of the brick, although it's not shown in this, in this particular drawing. But it does have the five stores on Main Street, two floors that fit between, within the bulk of the existing building. It's about 35 foot high. And then this additional fourth floor that reaches a 45-foot high and is setback on that drawing. They also should mention that we're putting an addition in the back of the building. There's a, there's a notch missing in the building. We're adding about 1,400 square feet per floor there. And when you look at slide five, you can see the existing building from the back, and there's a drop in elevation that's close to seven to eight feet from Main Street to, to East Avenue. So all of that basement has windows out to the, to the back parking area. So the drawing actually, on the, on the right-hand sides, what we're proposing is putting in a slightly sloped driveway into the lower level and lowering the floor of the basement between one and two feet, probably a foot and a half or so, to fit the garage in that lower level.
What kind of ceiling height would that give you approximately?
We're looking for about eight and a half finished ceiling, but there may be some beams that are lower than that. Because it's, I'll show you in the plan, the reason why. Then you can see the first floor above the garage and the two other floors that fit within, within the bulk of the existing floor, and then that fourth floor above that setback.
Sir, I had a question on slide five, if I may, just to be sure I understand the bump out.
Yes.
So I'm looking at this on the left, and so the, the part of the building with outside fire escape, and there's a door on the side, and I look at the second floor, that's your building? That's this building?
Yes, that's, yes, you can see that stair coming down off of that second floor and the photograph on the left-hand side.
So those, I guess, three windows and the door, and I guess there's a door below it that all goes away and is part of the rehab?
It would become an existing, it'd be lovely to have that as a brick interior wall.
Interior, perhaps, but yeah.
But that would become a wall that we want to keep, and then we would build the notch around it.
Okay. If you look at page two, the site plan, it shows, the corner that we hope to, to fill in is shown clearly in a box on page two, just to help you visualize.
Also, on the picture on the right, the, as developed, on the lower left of that, there seemed to be a very small building with some kind of railing above it. What is that? It's two little windows?
Yeah, it's unfortunately on the photograph on the left, it's not shown. There's an existing bump out on the building right there, that's part of the first floor. We're suggesting keeping it and possibly creating a terrace for the apartment above.
I mean, it's, it's above this new garage.
Correct.
In the far left, there's two little windows, that's not there, there now?
It's existing.
Oh, okay.
That bump out exists.
What does it do?
It's, it's part of the store that's in that location. The store runs all the way to the back.
The new store is about to open, Spice and Tea Exchange actually goes all the way back into that space.
Oh.
You'll see it in the plan, when we get to that plan, I'll show it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next slide on six is just a view from, from the north, just looking at what the building would look like, back towards the south. Slide seven is the parking area. And if you, you see on this, on this drawing, on the left-hand side, at a smaller scale, is the existing plan. The building is built with, with retaining walls. And the idea is to create, open that up with, with new structural beams that create the 13 parking spaces and the two egress stairs and elevator. Next, next one, eight. You see there, in the, what would be the northeast corner, in a red box, the area of the addition, right? So that's what's being added, about 1,400 square feet. On the front of the building, or the, in yellow, are the retail stores. This is the Spice and Tea one is store number three that goes all the way to the back. That's that bump out that you were talking about on the other drawing. And the, the hallway, the egress hallway, kind of creates a separation between the retail stores and the spaces behind where we are suggesting putting those two apartments.
Sorry, another question, future expansion means what?
It means that potentially in the future, if that, that store moves out, relocates, there's a possibility of creating a shorter store, half that space, and adding the back area to that one-bedroom apartment and making it a two-bedroom apartment.
Well, looking at store number three, you know, bowling alley-shaped stores tend to do pretty badly. You know, when shops in the back, two-thirds, it tends to be no man's land, so I can understand why you'd want to do that.
Yeah.
There are a lot of stores in town that are like this, and they tend to be pretty quiet.
It's just too deep, yeah.
Yes, too deep, right. Then on the, the next, next slide nine, that, this is a representation of what's being proposed for the second and third floor. Both floors would be identical, suggesting four, four apartments, a one-bedroom, two, two-bedrooms, and a three-bedroom. And that, again, those, those two are within the bulk of the existing structure. And then the one on 10 is the fourth floor, which is an addition on the roof that's setback both on the west and east side. And I think the next image, I think, helps a lot, is the section on 11. And it shows how the dotted line is kind of where the basement floor is currently, and potentially lowering that floor, excavating. And we just got the survey, it's probably going to be more like a foot, a foot and a half that needs to be excavated to create that space. We need to clarify that. That would be all garage at the lower, lower level, basement level. On the left-hand side, you see that's where Main Street is, so the retail stores are on that side. And then the two, two floors of apartments within the building and the fourth floor above that.
Commissioner Cris, again, the, this would be an ADA-compliant elevator building?
ADA compliant, yes. And it probably needs to be for stretchers, it's one of those longer elevators. It's not represented properly on the drawings, but based on code, we have to put one that's.
You're proposing 12 units, it's units, not bedrooms, but units, and there are 12 parking spaces in the, for, I guess, tenants.
Yeah.
Residents in the basement, there's one for visitors and one for delivery vans. So everybody gets one, is that the master plan?
That, that's the idea. I mean, we, we'd like to think perhaps some people move in, will decide they don't really need a car, but that probably is wishful thinking.
Have you talked to maybe some neighbors like the Chase Bank behind you? Because they have a big lot that tend not to use all that much, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm, we have not spoken.
Careful describing not using too much.
Okay.
That lot is filled.
That lot's pretty.
Well, it's filled because you're going to New Canaan Butcher or something like that, and they chase you off. But okay, I take your point, Mr. Chairman.
I, I will say, just as an aside, and it's something that I hope the commission would take up and maybe give an opinion on. I have been to the parking commission to talk about overnight parking, because I'm starting to get more applications like this where people are looking to have residences in town. And there's no overnight parking in any of the municipal lots. And I spoke with Stacy over there, and I said, listen, you know, how do we get overnight parking? And this one, thankfully, we don't need it. But I have another one that's going to be coming down the line soon that is not going to have any parking. And she said that it's an ordinance, actually, which I didn't realize. It's the ordinance that does not allow overnight parking. So I think that, you know, at some point, I was going to come back to this commission, hopefully get, you know, with what we're trying to do in town with residences, affordable housing and the like, we need to sort of change that rule, because we have to have some sort of overnight parking for some of these residences. So I bring that up just as an aside, but it triggered me when you said the Chase lot, because we're going to start to need this for some other applications, not necessarily this one, although it may need it, but I think we need to, you know, give that to some consideration. Anyway, sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Or build more parking.
If you want to go down that road, we could do that.
There is no parking requirement, just as a reminder, in the retail A-zone.
Yeah. But from a practical perspective, we need it, like, doesn't, yeah. I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
No, I think that's, that's, kind of summarizes everything, the idea of the three to five retail stores, 12 overall residential units, two of which would be affordable.
Commissioner Cris, again, just a couple of points. I noticed the fenestration of the building will change significantly from where it is now. A lot of the windows are sort of hidden, but I'm looking at the original picture of the building, which is on page three. You're adding quite a lot and pumping it up, as well as on the side of the building, you're adding some, some windows. So I assume structurally, this is not a problem.
Structurally, we understand that.
Yeah, we have Kevin Archer as our structural engineer, who's familiar with historic buildings and renovations. And. Excuse me?
Wood structure buildings, too, I mean, he's particularly experienced in structure.
Interestingly enough, the walls that are parallel to Main Street are not load-bearing. It's the walls that are perpendicular to the street. So that face, that facade face, how we fenestrate that, how we punctuate it with windows, is going to be pretty easy for us, because we're not trying to load bear a puncture. So we're lucky that way.
Let me mention, this, this rendering, it doesn't mean it's an elevation. This is just an idea or a concept of where we would go, but obviously, we would develop proper elevations once we understand everything.
Our hope, I think, would be with, with Michael and his firm's help, would be to bring some more rationality and symmetry and logic to the window layout on the front facade. We actually, Grant and I saw a, a quote of an old map that was done in 1878, that you could actually see this building. And this, this window pattern was there. It, there was apparently a devastating fire in 1899, and Mr. Raymond rebuilt the whole building at that time. But he clearly saved some of the brick facade, and I think they just kind of, he said, make it work. And they figured out how to put windows wherever they could to make it work. But we would like to rethink all of the windows into a more attractive national pattern.
But I do think we're sensitive to the historic nature of the brick and how it really affects the face of that Main Street facade is really important to what we're trying to accomplish as well.
But also, it's also the design of the windows and crenellation can be a little more old-timey.
Right.
Would be a, at least a thought on, on, on my mind, so.
I think it looks good, and I think it's a, a good, a better entrance for cars, better parking situation. The one thing, and I know that two out of the, two units are affordable, but by my calculations, they are two one-bedroom units, 900 feet each. So 1,800 feet out of 29,540 feet is a little over 6%. So 6% of the building is affordable. So I would urge you to either consider making some of the two bedrooms affordable or making a third, the third one-bedroom affordable to get us a little bit better than 6% of the building. So I just urge you to consider that, but I think it's a good plan. I think it's attractive, and I think it works in terms of flow, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good plan as well. I just have a, a couple of questions. I do think, you know, another, a third affordable unit would be beneficial to everybody. So if there's any way to financially do that, I think that's something I would consider you guys looking at. In terms of the penthouse, how far is that setback from the street?
On, on the drawings, we have about 10 feet on the west and 10 feet on the.
And have you done any sort of analysis from, like, a line of sight from the west side of Main Street? Because one of my fellow commissioners just mentioned about the historical nature of it. And, I mean, adding a story, I don't think there's many buildings in this area that are three and a half, four stories. And from a visual perspective, somebody walking on the, the west side of Main Street to see that, you know, kind of changes that historic character. I don't think I'm, I'm not, I'm not against the penthouse. I think it's, it's great to have the extra square footage. I, just from a pedestrian perspective, something setback further. I know, and in kind of my industry, that, that's a, it's something that they look at, especially in historic buildings. That'd be something I would. So maybe we could do a, at least show that, see what that looks like to this commission. Yeah. You know, I mean, we're even hoping after this that we can even get in front of you even next month for, you know, could kind of continue this, this conversation. But that would be a good thing to, yeah, we could look at for sure. And in terms of the, I guess it's the south side, facing the, the building that has blue mercury, you're going to be putting windows on that facade? Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and maybe Sarah knows this, but. And, and maybe Sarah knows this, but are they, I don't know, do they have any sort of legal significance in terms of like light and air and ventilation? Or are they just, I say it because of what's to stop the, the blue mercury building from building up and you having a board of those windows? So if there's, if there are any, you know, if they're just for, for view and for, you know, convenience, then I see it's fine. But you know, if there's, if there's no agreement or any sort of, you know, legal restriction on the neighboring building that, you know, an easement in favor of your building for light and air, it'd be something I would consider, especially putting windows on.
Some of those windows already exist, but we're proposing some additional ones above.
Right.
Commissioner Chris, again, is this going to be a condo or a rental?
Rental.
Rentals. All units are rentals?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, did you have something to?
I'm trying to be patient. You, I believe you'd like our input as far as the exterior of the building. And I think I understood you correctly that this is just representing volume, basically. Character, it's not what you're really envisioning. Could you clarify that?
It's, it's conceptual, right? So we've, we've provided something to give you an idea of what the, the building may look like, but it's not, obviously, we haven't done elevation studies yet. We haven't worked through that at this point. This is very conceptual.
Well, based on this concept, I have a few comments. Is it, is this going to be new brick?
No, the, the building has three different colors of brick. There's a red brick in the back. There's this whitewashed brick on the side. And on the front, if you look through the prison bars, it, it's a tan, a, a tan. We want to see if there's a way that we can integrate it all to a tone that kind of works. And there are methods of doing that and we would want to research that instead of keeping it three different.
So you'll probably end up staining, painting something to that order?
There's some, right. There's some mineral based stains that work quite well that get embedded into the brick.
Okay.
Last very well.
As far as the historical side of it, the punched windows, you know, there's no articulation. It's a repeat as far as a form. It's incredibly boring. And I challenge you to break down the scale of it and create some interest, not just a blank facade. The signage band. I mean, it just has no character at all. And it's, you know, and I, I understand what you're trying to do. You're just defining that there's a band signage would go in it. But you need to articulate the signage and, or create some kind of method so that it's interesting and it's not just this model left.
I agree.
The storefronts themselves, you know, it almost looks like it's a modern addition to an existing building. There's no real articulation as far as how that storefront works with punched windows. So I challenge you to give that some serious thought. And then if you look at the, the top story that you're adding, it looks like it's a very modern structure, almost a glass cube. And I don't know if that's your intention, but again, there should be some kind of harmony because at certain angles, you will be able to see that top story.
So the intention was to kind of keep the masonry part of the historic building as one part of it and a very lightweight glass addition on the roof. That, that's the intention. Obviously we haven't designed it yet, but that's the, the direction to make it feel lightweight and not as heavy as what's below.
Okay.
In, in fairness to Michael, we've been working very quickly to just try to get some representation of what it may look like. We're, we're a long way. I mean, the, the part that Grant and I love the most is working on all the details you're speaking of.
Right. Oh, we, you know, totally understand that. Just trying to give you some advice on, you know, where you could take this as far as your next steps. There's a, looks like a structure, if you go to slide five, where the, it looks like the entrance into the parking garage. There's a, a structure has, is it a penthouse? What is that?
Sorry, could you repeat? I didn't hear.
It's, slide five.
Yeah.
If you look where the entrance to the garage is.
Yeah.
Up to the left, you'll see a brick structure. It's got two windows.
Yeah.
What, what is that?
That's the, that's an existing, if you go to the plan on page eight. And if you look at the store number three, it extends all the way to the back there. So that's an existing part of the building.
It was added onto the building later. It was added, we think that portion was added as a sole storage room. Cause you're actually on the inside on what would otherwise have been the face of the building, there ripped up windows. So it was added later and just went up essentially a story and a half from there.
Okay. Speaking of which, as far as the mechanical systems, what is your thoughts? Where is all the equipment going to go with this?
So we're trying to think as sustainably as possible.
We really want to change this to an all electric building. Get rid of the oil boilers and all. And if you look at the, at the garage level in the basement, we have some corners that are kind of in that southwest area. You see kind of a mechanical and a storage area back there.
Page seven.
If we were to do basically heat pumps and put those condensers there, we were just at the site today with a mechanical subcontractor. You could put all of those condensers at that level, open air, nothing on the roof. We want to make this a clean roof. That's the idea is that corner would be open and all the mechanical equipment could fit down there. That's the idea.
Keep, uh, keep in mind the sound that it will create.
This is Commissioner, why, why do you need the, why do you need the fourth story? Could, would it be feasible to change this so that you have just the three stories?
The, I think the, the economic answer to that is we're, we're renovating the building, but we're doing a very, very extensive reconstruction of the building in effect. We're adding the corner. We have to add an elevator. We're going to add sprinklers to the whole building. We'll put in all new electrical system, all new HVAC system. So there's a pretty huge fixed cost to make it into, make it preserve its historic appearance, but to make it into a modern building. And the addition of all, all those costs, by having that, that fourth floor on top, it gives you an opportunity for some significant additional income that helps really justify the, the investment of everything it takes with or without floor to get the building modernized. So that's kind of our simple answer to the question. It's a fair question.
I mean, I would think that in general, you know, the project wouldn't work for them without the fourth floor. I mean, to be brutally honest, to pay for the property to come in to do this renovation. I mean, it, it doesn't work financially for that. Which is honestly one of the reasons why we're here today. I mean, if, if that would be a real issue for this commission, we would need to know about it. And, you know, unfortunately, they probably wouldn't move forward with that, without having that fourth floor. It's just, would be cost prohibitive to do, to do the deal.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Chris. My, my initial gut reaction is that I'm not against a fourth floor. Some of the design issues that Commissioner Turner brought up is sort of making it more integrated in and look with the rest of the historic building is something I'm very sympathetic for. But I, I hear on, on the value that it would create and it's clearly that's the premium product with the big deck and all this. So I, 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 I take the point. I did have a question though. You said you wanted a clean roof. I'm wondering about solar on the roof or something like that. Is that anything that you're considering?
We're going to look at all those options for sustainability and really make this as a green project as possible, but we haven't gotten to that point, honestly. I think with solar panels, you would actually be bumping over that 45 foot height restriction. So that might be something we can talk about in a later meeting if that's meaningful. But right now the idea is to just keep that, as Michael has said, as light and clean as possible, keep mechanical, keep anything else on top of that roof off as, as much as we can.
Just last, last question. You, you, you're a curb cut into the planned garage. That curb cut as far on the street is going to not be changed though, because that's a state highway, you know?
Yeah.
We don't want to touch that.
There are rules on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So one quick comment. I think Commissioner Chris and, and Commissioner Turner really hit this about the historic aspects. My only thought is if, if you haven't already, given the amount of time we've spent with the historic commissions in town, I think it would be really useful to have conversations with them before applying. Obviously I can't tell you to do that. I, I think that much of what is proposed, at least from my chair, makes a ton of sense. This is much better. We saw another iteration of this building last year, I believe. And this seems significantly improved.
I, I would, as Commissioner Chris, I would concur with Commissioner Cassavant. Just as a heads up, whenever you're doing anything big to an historic building, it tends to generate a certain amount of interest in town. So I'll stop talking.
Where? I, I could, I just briefly, my family and I lived in New Canaan for 11 years, from 1987 to 1998. We actually renovated a, a true colonial house. It was, the historical side is not quite sure if it was built in 1731 or 1761. But I, I'd like to think we did a very respectful restoration. I was at 270 North Wilton Road and we loved the house. Our kids were both born here. And much more recently, just during the pandemic, my wife and I bought a little 1925 era house in South Salem. And on which we did a very extensive renovation and it's all electric. We put on a, a green roof, just not because we had any credit for it. We just thought it was a great idea. And, and have sedum planted on the green roof and it's gorgeous and it's maintenance free. And so something I would like to consider as perhaps an alternative to solar panels would be actually literally to be have a green, a roof with vegetation on it. Which is pretty nifty. Interesting.
I just have one final question. On the parking garage, as far as the mechanical ventilation of it, which I believe you're going to have to do because it's not open. Where are you going to exhaust all your fans to? Where, where?
We need to research that.
We, we've not gotten that far into the details, but clearly we're headed that way.
At the corner, however, at the corner that we're adding, we're going to keep as much of that open, may have some kind of a attractive fence or something for security. To keep as much of that, we don't want that to be a solid wall to allow as much ventilation as possible. And beyond that, we, I mean, we could open up on the east base of the building, to the extent we need to, we could open up some of that wall too, to make sure we have plenty of ventilation. Cause we're certainly very focused on that importance of that.
The nature, nature of my question is just, you know, does that impact the neighbors?
Right, yeah. Good point.
Thank you.
So I'll just echo a lot of what you've already heard. I think this is an improvement over a different project that was brought to us for this building last year. I think that your ideas for parking are creative and important for this project. So I was happy to see that. I love the adaptive reuse, the historic preservation. There's a lot, a lot to like with what you've done here. I will echo Mr. Engel's comment about the affordable units both being one bedrooms. What I'm hearing, and I wear a different hat sometimes on the town's affordable housing committee, is that two and three bedrooms is where the real need is. So I'd love to see it if you could put one of those as a two or three bedroom. And then the other sort of only issue that I see for me is that I know that the 750 square foot cap in retail A is, is tough. You know, I, I get that. And it's also tough as I think about it, you know, whether it's a one bedroom or a three bedroom, like 750 square feet doesn't cut it. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that can't change. Some of these units are larger, on the larger side. And so that troubles me a little because I do think this town needs some smaller units, maybe not 750 square feet, but also not, you know, 2,500. So, you know, that's, that's something that I'm weighing. I do think that doing the inclusionary zoning, you know, I'm the one that wrote that regulation. It didn't occur to me at the time to, to alter the unit size as one of the bonuses for doing the inclusionary zoning. So I think that is something that we can consider. I'm sort of like, do we do that and also let you go up in height? Or is it one or the other? You know, whatever. I haven't figured it out, but I'm just letting you know where my head's at. But I do think 750 square feet is too small. I don't need, think we need to go super huge. And I also just need to figure out what an appropriate trade off for doing the inclusionary zoning is in exchange for some of these other things you're asking for.
On, on the affordable housing, and I feel we still need to make sure we understand everything correctly, but I've tried very, very hard to understand all the moving parts to how that works. And the best that I can figure out, and I used, actually used the Burtis Avenue, their housing plan as sort of a guide, which was very helpful. The best I can figure out to have with the one bedroom, one, one bedroom apartments at the affordable rate versus market rate, it's, it's the difference in the annual income is approximately $35,000 to $40,000 a year per unit. So you're talking about a diminution on the two small apartments of $90,000 a year. And if you think about that and, which translates, if the building were sold, say, three or four years after it's completed, that difference in income translates to a sale value that is plus or minus $3 million. So the alternative of paying into the fund, which philosophically we don't like, and philosophically, we love the idea of having inclusionary housing and we'd love to see it go to people who work in New Canaan and are part of the community. And that's why frankly, without a lot of careful thought, we just went right to, let's do that. And when, when I was asked, as we prepared for tonight, do the, do the economics really make sense? I said, I haven't really wanted to stay on that hard because my intuition tells me they don't make sense. You'd be better off paying the $300,000. And it's a pretty massive difference. So it would, it would, I think it would push any, any person doing a project of this sort, if the expectation was for doing two bedrooms, it would just very quickly push you, it's better to pay into the fund and to.
I understand, and I think those are the trade offs that we as a commission need to understand. I mean, as I'm sure you're aware, this is only the second project that's really come through attempting to use this regulation. So we don't have it all figured out.
We'd love to help with that. We'd love to, we could share our analysis and talk it through, try to figure out if there's other creative solutions.
And I'll say when, when they came to me, the first thing they said was, we want to work with the town regulations. Like I said, well, you know, there's 830Gs, you can do other things. And like, no, 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 we want to work with this. So I mean, they looked at these regs, they tried, they worked their project into these regs. And yes, these were the two items that came up was obviously the square footage, first, the first floor residential and the height. So, you know, it's nice to have clients like that who want to try to work with the regs and that was, and, and they are really bright people, this group, by the way, and they do their homework and they've done a lot of projects in other places. And, you know, for the most part, they're pretty local. So I think that they, this would be a good application to sort of massage some of these. And obviously anything with the height, the, the square footage, you know, that's going to be up to the commission. Right? In the end, it's not going to be like every single person can do this now without your permission. I mean, that's not what we're asking to do. It will always be something that the commission can make a decision. Well, if you have a nice design and you're doing this and that, then you can do, you know, you're not going over the height. Then you're allowed to have the fourth story or you're allowed to have the first floor residential. And sometimes first floor residential is not going to work in retail A at all. In this case, it actually works pretty well, just based on how long this first floor is. Deep, yeah. I mean, it's, but generally I can't, I'm sure there's other buildings, but it's not really going to be something. I think a lot of people are going to be all of a sudden buying buildings in New Canaan and trying to put residents on the first floor.
And I think that's a good point, Mr. Ruchi. I mean, I think we need to build our toolbox of options that we can dip into to make the inclusionary zoning work. And I do not sit here and profess that we've filled that toolbox up yet. So, you know, maybe you guys are bringing some more to the table.
It, it's extremely useful to look to the state guidance here on what the town ultimately has to balance in terms of units. And any policy document on, and that was my initial question on the penthouse units, right? I understand the, the cap rate issue on the building itself, but you're adding an, in fact, the way I would look at this is you're adding an incredible amount of square footage relative to the existing square footage. So that if you take the existing building, this is meant to be helpful and nothing else, you take the existing building and how many units could fit in there? And you were forced through the inclusionary zoning rule to be at our percentage cap. And yet your increased request is, is quite substantial as a percentage of the existing building. The town's requirement and our need is to have more than just, you know, and, and we're at a number of income levels. I presume you're familiar with the AMI tiering. The challenge for us is to be able to produce some twos in particular and, and an occasional three. I'm not recommending, obviously, I don't think this math would work if you converted one of your penthouses into an affordable three, because the cap rate issue is so huge on that single unit. But the asks, there are a set of pretty significant asks here for this building. And so, the, a challenge for us as a town is, everyone that we look at, what does it do to our net proportionality relative to ones, twos, and threes for affordability? And when we discussed, when this was created, the regulation, we actually decided, should we go deeper, deeper, deeper? We decided to opt to let the developers come up with rational ideas around this. And that's why, I mean, it's a great opportunity to look at that.
Well, we'll definitely go back and study all of these suggestions.
This is Commissioner Chris again. Looking at the top floor, especially with the rental, I'm trying to wrap my mind around the three-bedroom rental, it no doubt a very high price, and whether two bedrooms sort of makes more sense, since you're either with a professional couple or maybe an empty nester that may not want their bedroom. At least, that's my, my, my own sense of things, which gives you another bedroom, and you still have use of the roof terrace, you can split it and so forth. You have a lot of footprint here you can play with, so I don't think you're exactly square in the circle, circle on this. But I, I, I had another question. You mentioned $3 million in market value with a $90,000 a year give-up. Not sure what cap rate you use, but it seems low.
Residential cap rates are pretty low. I mean, they're, until, until interest rates went up, whenever it was, 14, 16 months ago, they were down typically for a market like New Canaan about 4.5%. Today, they're probably more like 5 or 5.5.
Yeah.
Even, even at those numbers, it, it makes a surprising amount of difference.
We, we, we understand, and I think this commission looked at Bertis, we realized there's a certain amount of give and take.
Yeah.
And I, I think we came up, I like to think we came up with a good decision. Well, we came up with a decision anyway, whether it was good or not, others can decide what was the decision. But, and, and so, I would just share the thought that the, in, my experience has been the commission is willing to have a conversation as far as give and take, in order to achieve everyone's goals.
Well, the dialogue's helpful, and that's why we wanted to come and present and get this. It, it helps us decide, do we move forward or not? And it's been very helpful to, to hear the feedback.
Anything to get rid of that facade, it just drives me crazy. I tell you, I'm going to say it, it's just awful. Yeah, I don't like it at all.
We joked about asking the town to close the street and throw a parade the day we take the facade down. We're all curious to see what's under that.
Commissioners, anything further? But I, I guess I'll conclude and chime in, and thank you for the very comprehensive and thorough presentation. As a pre-application, I think this is exactly what we as a commission look for. Thought out, considered. Again, we understand it's schematic, and there are details to be worked out. But just in terms of resolving parking levels and height considerations, and then obviously, the floor plates and the fenestration and the facade, all of that goes to helping us not only understand the project, but hopefully get behind it. And then, as far as the design, I'd also like to commend you on that. This is a, a very considered solution for the existing three-story structure. You see this a lot through New England. I can think of multiple buildings in Worcester, Providence, Portland, Maine, all of whom industrial and factory buildings that have taken this same approach, where they're maintaining the, the historical facade and adding a modern or a different component on top of that, whether it be one level or more. And I think it's a very successful reuse of the building and rehabilitation while maintaining a historical aspect to it. So, kudos to you.
Thank you.
We thank all of you for your time this evening very much, and want to thank both David and Michael for all the help and support for giving Grant and me to get to this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, next item on the agenda here, this is part of our public hearing session. Next item is 884 Smith Ridge, upon application of Alfred Delac.
That's getting moved.
Oh, that is?
Yep.
In addition to?
All the special projects.
All of them. Okay. Ah, then we're back into regular meeting session. Deliberation and possible action on any closed items. Those have all been pushed, so they're not closed. The administrative actions on other matters. Right now, we have 90 Main Street. This is upon application of Joseph Thompson, authorized agent for Trio on Main LLC, owners for a site plan approval pursuant to Sections 4.2, Point C, Point 4, and 6.12 to allow for food shops retail in the Retail A zone at 90 Main Street, Napti Block 67, Lot 6, Lot 76. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and your relationship to the project.
Joseph Thompson, architect, representing a potential new tenant for 90 Main Street in the 84 Main Street tenancy space. I'm here with Elizabeth Srivastava. The new business will be Cezanne Sucre. It's a pastry shop that's proposed for the existing tenant space, approximately 2,200 square feet. Currently, an art gallery that will be vacating at the end of this month. And so, we're proposing to adaptively reuse that space, a long space, as you can see from the floor plans, to place the commercial kitchen in the rear, and then a customer area and seating area in the front. Part of that proposes some facade alterations, where we'd like to see if the board would be open to the idea of modernizing the facade on the ground level. That would include a folding storefront that would open up, and I think have some benefit of activating the streetscape. I do understand that it's a traditional historic building on Main Street, so that may or may not be acceptable, but I do think that there's some benefit to consider. If you'd like, I could try to upload and share the presentation, some of the documents, and walk through what we're suggesting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't see 90.
It's under administrative actions.
All of the items we're about to hear are under administrative actions for this month.
Sorry, I was logged on, but it's, Sarah, you don't have the presentation, do you?
Unfortunately, you sent it to me after business hours, so I was not able to upload it.
Let's see. I also have it on a flash drive, if that's possible.
So, this laptop does not have PowerPoint or anything on it, so I can pull up your application, but I don't have your.
That has most of it, and I'll see if this will load in the interim. If that's.
It's just black.
Wonderful. Was up before. Let's see. That's not. Sorry. Does the board have copies of the documents that we could discuss?
We do. Everything's posted online.
Okay. Oh.
So, I have, I have the floor plan and the elevation.
Perfect, then I'll, I'll try to bring up the rendering in the interim. So, the site plan's pretty basic. There's no site plan changes proposed. We just identified the space on the property. 90 Main Street is essentially multiple buildings that are assembled together on one property that have a number of tenants. So, this is the, I believe it's the westernmost space, closest to City Hall here. And so, the floor plans that are currently on the street screen, there's the existing floor plan, which we're proposing to open up some of the spaces that are currently closed off. They're like back office rooms that supported the, I suppose, the art gallery uses. And to utilize the rear area of the space, again, is the commercial kitchen. And the front has a seating area with a front display counter and cash wrap. And again, proposing the folding glass storefront in the front that would open up the space to the street and really activate this facade and allow the activity that would be inside this to translate through. And I think could be very engaging for Main Street application. Once I get the rendering up, we'll share that, but I, I think it's done in a way that it doesn't detract from the overall composition of the building. The, the adjacent 90 Main Street building is much more historic in nature, where this is a very simple, much simpler detailing, almost federal-like in a way, and very clean forms and lines, where I think, again, this, this folding storefront could be very complimentary. So, the elevation tells part of the story of what we're proposing, and also depicts the new signage. We're proposing to remove, obviously, the former tenant's signage, which in some aspects was non-conforming, and propose to replace that with a sign that conforms to the sign ordinance. The sign itself, if the compositions of interest to the board, we're proposing a very traditional carved wood sign with gold lettering. That would be the colors of the business, the black and gold colors.
And then, on the street elevation, the door all the way to the left, that will remain as access for the tenants above?
That would be proposed to remain. I'm sorry, for lack of technology, the board would like to see it. Best I have is an image we could come up and present, if that's okay? Your pass. So, this is an image of the proposed folding storefront. Now that could potentially open up the street. The upper levels would be unaffected by the ground floor operations. And again, the image is exposed, again, I think is complementary to large paints of some of the forms of the upper facade, and it's almost, almost federal-type building design. And you can see by the nature of the brick next to it, this is a different vintage than the building portion that we're proposing to alter.
How do you overcome the grade change? Because it looks like in your elevations, it's a level sidewalk to the interior floor level. The renderings appear to be level, but there's actually like a four or five-inch difference between.
There is, there's a slight ramped surface that we'd have to preserve to enter into the space. So, the thought would be to have that storefront pulled back to the same plane as the current entry door, so that we're not affecting the, the transition between the sidewalk and the current space as it's currently formatted with that ramped surface. Because I don't imagine that we have the ability to manipulate the, the brick paved surface in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to talk to the Department of Public Works and what they'll require.
Our thought was to present the, the concept overall, see if the board would be open to the alteration. And if the board is, then we would dive further into the details on how we make that work and try to make that as accessible as possible in this situation. I think a truly accessible entrance is technically feasible in this case. Again, unless we're allowed to manipulate that sidewalk surface to bring it up to level with the building. And it, it does seem to dip a bit there. We'd have to have some grading, you know, established for the photography there, to see if we're able to pull that up, but it does seem to dip, but there might be some room for that. I just don't know if the, you know, DPW and Main Street is probably a county or state road.
It is, it's a state road, so the Department of Public Works would have no say over that, so.
Got it, so that would be an interaction with the state.
The one, just for the record, the one crack here, you do have to comply with if you're going to be modifying, if you choose to go down that road and try and modify the sidewalk to satisfy the grade and elevation changes, the town does have a paving requirement for those brick pavers on that sidewalk, that they require all, all the tenants along the, along Main Street to comply with that construction detailing.
That would make sense, I think, in this case, if it were to be altered, to try to salvage all the material and reinstall.
And then, looking at the floor plan, so you have a seating area in the front, you have your POS cashier display and sales area in the middle with the two bathrooms. And then, there's a series of steps that go up to a seating area in the back, and then back to the kitchen. Does that satisfy your ADA requirements? It does, I guess. You get one-third down at the front area.
It does, in that we're able to provide all service down at the ground level. We'll have customer seating at the ground level. We would upgrade the two restrooms to fully accessible restrooms at the ground level. So, essentially, anything beyond that, you know, would require, let's say, vertical access, I think would qualify as technically infeasible. And so, for public interaction, everything that would be needed to have a full experience there is at the, the front entry at grade.
Okay. And is that a break room outside the office?
It is a small break area.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further?
I just have a question possibly for Sarah about the outdoor dining. So, I read in your memo that because this is a state road, the state would have to approve outdoor dining.
Yes, we don't issue outdoor dining permits for anything on Main Street.
Okay, so that's not, number one, they're not asking for that tonight, and number two, that wouldn't be us that they would ask. Okay, understood.
What kind of cooking equipment, or what kind of food are you going to serve? And I only ask because we keep hearing about the smells from some of these food establishments and how it affects the neighborhood. And so, since we're going to a food use, I just wonder, is this, if you could elaborate on, on what's going to be made onsite?
So, it's going to be all French pastry, so primarily viennoisery, things like croissants, banh au chocolat. We'll do some breads as well, baguettes, things like that, tarts, small cakes.
So, Main Street's going to smell like a bakery?
Yes.
All right.
I think most people will be okay with that.
I would just hope you could have some gluten-free. I just hope you have some gluten-free things.
Kind of appropriate to have a stretch lab next to the bakery.
Absolutely, yes.
Do a little workout, then get.
Gluten-free, some vegan and dairy-free options as well.
Beyond pastries, would be other foods such as sandwiches or other types of?
We do plan to have some savory items, so we are doing baguettes. So, we would, you know, have baguette sandwiches, things like that, some, you know, savory croissants. You know, we don't plan to have table service or anything like that, so just small items to grab and go.
How early will you open?
I think initially, we're planning on opening at 7:00 AM. See how that, that works out with the kitchen operations, and then extend the hours from there, if all goes well.
Going back to the facade renovations, the existing brick that.
If those mics aren't in use, can we shut them off and just?
So, the existing brick on the facade, that's to remain?
We wouldn't alter any of the brick.
So, your scope of work is literally the ground floor bay of the signage band and deck?
Correct. Only that area where we have the two bays, and it recesses into the existing entry door. Okay. Is what we propose to alter.
And the landlord is in support of these modifications?
He is.
There, okay.
She is.
She's.
Okay. And is there any, so we, we talked about the possibility of you needing to recess the, the collapsible doors back from the sidewalk edge to satisfy the ramping and the grade. That's going to leave you with a soffit in front of the doors.
Correct.
Is there going to be any kind of lighting or anything proposed on the exterior of those doors in that soffit?
Thought is to illuminate the facade, soft lighting, so like 3,000 Kelvin, very warm, but to have that illuminated in the evening. So, the fixtures themselves would not be visible unless you were standing very close or underneath that soffit?
So, recessed cans?
Recessed, yeah.
Is that, is that an issue? I think we allow, it's a nail page next door. I think they have a single.
I just answered the same question.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We can't have lit signs, but we can have softly lit facades.
Right. It's me? Okay. Commissioners, anything further? Okay. Does anyone, is anyone from the public, would they like to speak? No, no public on this one? Got it. Anything further from your side?
Nothing further unless the board has any questions or additional information needed.
Yep. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I could ask, when does the board make a decision?
We'll, we'll vote at this. We're going to go through. We'll vote at this, we're going to go through the four applications that we have and then we'll vote on. Oh, we can vote right now? Easy enough, then. We'll do that way. Hey, Commissioners. Do I have a motion on this one? Do I have a second? This is Mr. Benton on the second. Any comments, considerations, or conditions?
I think it's a great addition to the, to Main Street. I'm very happy at the fact that we have several proposals to improve Main Street, which has been the area of downtown, which, you know, has vacancies. And we certainly need a pastry shop. And I think it's all good for the town. And those, if you look, go down to Spiga, which is down the street, they have those openings to the outside. And it really makes for a nice situation. Last night we were at Spiga and we looked at the, it was a nice, warm evening. It was really nice. They had the front open and it really made for a nice opportunity. You could actually sit inside and feel like you were outside. So I think that, I think it's all good.
As Commissioner Chris, I would agree with Commissioner that these types of pastry shops tend to have relatively high footfall as compared to a restaurant, because you're going, you got something quickly, you go. And so it generates traffic and cross-shopping in the town. I think it enhances the merchandising of the downtown. I would see it as a plus for the downtown. I'm in favor of it.
All right. Call to vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Kasavat?
Yes.
John Criss?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
Christine Larson?
Yes.
Great, you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, 32 Elm. Applaud application of Mark Demerle, Demerly. Authorized agent for 32 Elm Street LLC. Owners for site plan approval pursuant to section, to section 8.2, to allow a restaurant in the retail A at 32 Elm, map T, block 66, lot 97. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and your relationship to the application.
Thanks for hearing us. I'm Mark Demerly. I'm representing this application. Growing up in New Kane, and I had some wonderful architectural mentors and Victor Chris Janard and John Blackley and Elliot Noyes and Alan Goldberg. And as far as the design restaurants go, I've done the Centro in Fairfield, Pasta Ficio in Westport, the Nitnoy Provisions Kitchen in South Norwalk, the Nitnoy Cafe at Cos Cob and the Centro in Greenwich, which I won an award, a design merit for that one from the Greenwich Council for the Arts for a significant contribution to the built, to built community. And that brings me to Andrea and his brother Daniel, who have made a significant contribution to this community in Dolce. Maybe some of you or all of you have been in Dolce, but he's created a wonderful product and place to be in the last five years and it's quite popular in town. And so the, this application for Andrea and Daniel, they're planning on transforming the art gallery of Arden and White to an upscale Italian restaurant. I have a script here. Let me read this for you. So here's what's going on there. The highest quality ingredients that we can possibly source combined with simplicity and emphasis on its flavors. These are the roots of our venue's concept. Our menu will comprise traditional contemporary Southern Italian small dishes, antipasti, a selection of imported cured meats and cheeses, homemade fresh pastas, imported Mediterranean seafood and a choice of fine meats and poultry, house-made desserts accompanied by an outstanding bar program and exceptional wine list. The staff is knowledgeable, professional. They will provide a sophisticated, stylish, vibrant ambiance. The kitchen equipment will exclusively utilize electric power, aligning with our commitment to environmental sustainability across all facts of our operation. We've decided to honor his father, Francois Lombardi, by naming our restaurant Lombardi's after our family name. It's a tribute to his legacy and the values he instilled in us. Well, I know about his work ethic. It's having been involved with him for the last six weeks and it's inexhaustible. And he does a great job. Key factors, environmental sustainability across all fact. This is probably a good time to tell you about my latest credential from the FIAS, FIAS CPHC. FIAS is the Passive House Institute of the United States and CPHC is certified, certified passive house consultant and designer. And so I'll be able to help out with the environmental sustainability wherever I can. We'll ensure compliance with regulations and requirements on all regulatory agencies claiming jurisdiction over the project. And there you have it.
Commissioners, any questions?
It's Commissioner Turner. I just noticed on the south, I think it's the south elevation, the entry, I'm sorry, north, the entry. You are indicating an ADA sill, but yet I can't maneuver a wheelchair in that vestibule. You might want to take a closer look at that.
We did with the fire marshal.
It's not a fire marshal issue.
I didn't hear your question.
My question was, actually, it's an observation. If you look at the entry door?
Yes.
On the north, you indicate a new ADA sill, which makes sense because so it's level.
Yes.
But the swing of the door, and you've got, you know, two side walls. I can't open that door in a wheelchair. I'm just giving you just some advice. You might want to look at that a little closer.
Do we have the floor plan that we can see?
If you, if you push the door so it's on the exterior of, in the same plane as the exterior of the building, it would conform, but I can't reach in there with a wheelchair and maneuver and pull that door open.
Okay, it can be, it can be pushed, yeah, it can be modified. It can be modified, yeah. Yeah, like you say, like it's inside the.
You need a foot and a half on the side.
Okay.
You need space on the side.
Okay, so we can just push the door exactly where the other windows are? That's what you're saying, so you can pull it from outside?
You could do that, or you could create a bigger opening?
We can create a bigger opening. I think it would be easier.
Yeah, it's just something to take a look at.
Okay.
It will be ADA compliant.
On the opposite door, the side that faces Morse Court, I mean, obviously, I know that's not the front-facing side of your restaurant. You've got two bathrooms back there and maybe like a pasta cooking machine?
No, that's a table on the.
Number six in the top-left corner?
It's a booth.
Oh, it's a booth.
It's a backup.
Okay, I was just wondering what the view, we don't have renderings or elevations of that side. Like, you know, there are entrances on Morse Court. We do?
There's an elevation south. Which I think. Exactly.
Oh, it looks the same. Okay, then I didn't pick up on it. Okay. So, but with the bathrooms there, there's not going to be a window?
It's not going to be a window. It's going to be the same material as the top.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
It's going to be the same material of the top part of the.
Yeah, well, the, you're speaking of the glass?
Yeah.
Yeah. The intention is to keep all the materials the same, glass and aluminum. And that, that section of glass would intend to be opaque.
Okay, that's all I wanted to understand. I just, I didn't want you to like wall it off so that there really didn't have any.
Yeah.
Front-facing part on Morse Court.
Rather than see a wall behind a, you know, a clear glass.
Right, okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Chris, so the ground floor is the dining and the kitchen and two single cabin ADA toilets.
Yes.
And the upper floor, which is not ADA accessible, there's, you go up the stairs and there's another, I guess, non-ADA toilet. It looks, and a small, looks like function room for six and then some other seating.
Correct.
In an office. And then the basement is storage of various sorts and staff areas, back to the, back to the house stuff.
Correct.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
The, this Commissioner Benton, the windows you have on the front, I know you're squaring them off. Are you keeping the windows the same height?
Yes.
Well, I'm presented on that elevation, the windows sitting on a bluestone curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. The windows currently are 18 inches off grade.
Right, front and back. Front and back, they're currently 18 inches up. So are you proposing the elevation on the north, which is facing Elm Street? That's the one where it's going to be lowered?
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioners, anything further? What about the materiality of the, of the storefront? Right now, it's all, you know, single glazed old aluminum and glass.
Yeah.
You'll be replacing all of that in its entirety?
Just from the panel above the door down?
Right, so.
So second, second story stays the same.
Second story stays, but.
And then the new would be thermally broken insulated glass. We would have to get into that a little bit when we're actually doing the production drawings, but we'll take into account U-values and. Thermally broken conditions beneath the window.
Yeah, I would just, I would just be interested in seeing, seeing what the condition is going to be on that south elevation. To Commissioner Nielsen's point, you have, you know, a bathroom facing the rear there. You have the booth, which is going to be, you know, 36 inches or so high to the back, all of which is up against that glass in the back. So is that whole elevation going to be opaque glass?
Not just the part where the bathrooms are.
And what about the booth side?
Clear glass.
Clear, okay. Commissioner Chris, you could have, obviously, in, inside dining, but also pickup or like takeout?
Probably eventually, yes, not at the beginning.
I'm just wondering where you put the stuff and where people are going to wait if they're picking up and so forth and.
On the left side, where the entrance in the building. There is like a little space that you can be a waiting area and the bartender can take the order.
I think there's 15-minute spots right outside.
Yeah, I notice those, yeah. I use those all the time. They're handy. Yes, they are.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further? Oh, one of the questions, do you plan any outdoor dining?
We're not sure if it's allowed. We will figure out when we pull the permit, if it's allowed to have outdoor dining over there.
It's allowed administratively.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further? Okay.
Oh, we're not in discussion. I have no further questions.
Okay. Do you guys have anything further? Okay. This application's closed. Commissioners, further deliberation, discussion? You can, we can do a motion to approve or we can discuss. So why don't we do a motion? Do I hear a motion on this application? Do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion and comments?
It'll be the only restaurant that's stripped.
On the south side.
And I think that's going to be kind of nice. Just like Sorrel represents, or the bakery we just heard from in the old Sorrel Gallery, represents a restaurant where there are none. This represents a restaurant where there are none, and I think it's going to be a nice contrast to the retail around it.
Agreed.
So it's an appropriate use of the space.
Agreed.
I also like the fact that you can access it from the front and the back, the Morse Court and the Elm Street. That's kind of rare among our restaurants.
Commissioners, anything else? Okay, so the one thing, just, are we allowed to put conditions on?
If it's needed to comply with those zoning regulations.
Okay. It just, for the record, we want to just make sure that they rework that front north facade to be ADA compliant. That's all. Okay.
I'm sorry. I think it might be appropriate to get samples of the glass. Yeah, we want to taste the food. Just to make sure that, you know, it's clear glass and.
I also want to show some pictures so we can see exactly what we're talking about, which we should have today, actually, but we don't know.
So there's more renderings coming or?
Yeah, I will, I will give you, I will provide, yeah, render so you guys can see everything exactly what it looks like.
Okay. Do we refrain from voting then, if there's more information coming?
I mean, I'm thinking about it.
So you can, if, you could approve the use? Because it is technically two separate approvals for the use versus changing the facade. So if you feel that you don't have enough information to vote on the facade changes right now, don't. But if you feel like you have enough information, you should vote.
What's your concern?
My concern, I share Mr. Turner's concern, just the materials that are going to be used on both, because they're replacing the whole lower level of glass and everything on both ends. But I'm also concerned understanding what the south end is going to look like with a locked-up window on one side, a partial booth on the other, and how it's going to work with the door. Right now, it's very different than what they're proposing, right? The north side is, it's sort of faceted, it's recessed slightly from the sidewalk, but it still allows proper reach range on the door that Mr. Turner is concerned about. The south side is different in that there's a recess there that they're getting rid of, but there's a step there. So there's a little bit of a curve. So you can't use that as an ADA access, but I'd still like to see how they're going to finalize the design on that facade. You know, the elevation that's in here just doesn't cut it for me.
So just so we're clear, it's not about the colors or the glass choice. It's really about how all these things, what it's going to look like from the street and how, given that all the proportions have changed.
Yeah, in order to, there's a level of code compliance that they have to implement in the design and that could significantly affect what is currently before us. So I'd like to see what that final resolution is.
And just that one facade, not the?
Both facades.
Both facades.
Both facades.
We could approve it as a condition.
Can we, Sarah? We can approve the use.
So, so approve the use and just clarify that you're approving the use, not the facade changes and that they need to come back.
Well, I think Kent just suggested, could you approve it administratively if it?
Is that what?
Which, which, that's what he's asking. Can you approve it, once he gives you the detail? And you say, yeah, that's what the commission intended, or no, that's not what the commission intended, kick it back.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
Well, I actually would counsel against that.
I would rather see it come back to us.
Yeah, I mean, we have two architectural experts who have not seen what it's going to look like, who might be unhappy with your technical analytic. I don't think putting you in that position is sensible.
So I, I recommend approving the use and if you, which it sounds like you all don't have enough information to make a decision on the facade changes, just, clarify that you're only approving the use right now, and that if they have facade changes in the future, they need to come back for a formal, design review.
Yeah, I mean, to the applicant admittedly stated that there's further development and, and resolution to the design components of the facade that they need to complete, that's fine, just come back to us with that, so we understand what we're getting.
So do we need to revise the motions that have been made, because I'm not sure any of this was clear when the motions were made?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve the use of a restaurant, subject to a further vote on a design review of the facade.
Second.
Second, okay, call to a vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
Christina Larson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So approved on the use, and if you could, for a follow-up meeting, just submit additional information on the two facades, pictures, renderings, if you have them, any material samples, just so we can feel confident that.
So just so I understand, there's another meeting that we have to come?
Yes.
In a month?
Well, we'll have to talk about that if it can fit into May, or how we squeeze them, is that pulling you up?
Yes, I'll try. Yeah, I know, it is what it is, it's, yeah, that's fine.
I think we can fit that on the May.
Yeah, so it'll be back on the May, on the May agenda.
Okay.
So we're, we're to present here again?
Yes.
I'll follow up once we talk later tonight about.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is fifty-seven South Avenue, upon application of Amy Zabitakis, Rucci Log Group. Wait a minute, Amy's not here.
Michael Trivede, Architect.
Oh, you are. Rucci Log Group LLC, authorized agent for St. A's, St. Aloysius Church Corporation, owners for a special perm modification of plans approved April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, in the apartment and business A zones at fifty-seven South Avenue, MAP T, block forty-five, lot ninety-eight.
This is Commissioner Knag, I'm disqualified for this matter because I had contributed toward the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Knag.
I'll do the same.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. You guys are welcome to just sit in the audience, it's fine.
So is Commissioner Knowles seated for this application?
Yeah, would be. Commissioner Knowles, that brings us to eight, eight, yeah. Okay.
Hi.
Welcome again.
Thank you. So there's a couple of modifications that we're presenting tonight, one is a bathroom addition next to the chapel, and the other one is we've changed the manufacturer of the solar panels to something that we think looks better than what we had before. So in the, the next image, what's bubbled in the, in the red cloud is a single-use bathroom, off of the hallway that connects the chapel to the school, and it's in close proximity of the chapel. In reviewing the, the security of the building with the children there and potentially different uses of the chapel, it, it seemed necessary to add a bathroom in that location. The next drawing just shows you the, the roof, the roof plan. It just continues same flat roof that's part of the, that connecting wing, connecting corridor. On the next drawing, we have a updated calculations by Redness and Mead, that show that the lot coverage is now twenty-one point eight percent, we're allowed twenty-five percent. The existing buildings that have since been removed was about twenty-four point eight percent, so we're under the, the coverage requirement. We also updated the elevations on the, on the next drawing, that shows, the upper drawing is what was approved previously, and below, on the left-hand side, is what that small addition would look like. It's, doesn't have any windows facing south, but then on the lower right-hand side, there's a window from the bathroom looking in towards that small courtyard space. And then there are a couple of images of this, the solar panels. The first one is what we presented to you previously, these are, were metal panels, they were fairly large, about fifty-six inches by about seventeen inches, they run horizontally. And on the next slide, you'll see what we're proposing now, these are concrete tiles, they're about seventeen inches by thirteen inches that have, a solar panel attached to it, when it's installed, it's just a continuous roof of solar panels, that, that looks more like a, similar to a slate roof, not exactly, but that idea, I think there's one more image that shows it from above. You can see that, how that whole roof comes together. And then the next image, I think, is probably, yeah, that's the panel itself. You can see there's an overlap of, of the solar panel over the concrete, so that the, the tiles sit over each other in such a way that you only have solar panel up against solar panel, in a continuous format. So those are the two, the two issues for, for tonight.
Question, do the colors change?
Sorry?
The colors of the panels, are they different from what was originally submitted?
The colors haven't changed at all, no.
So it's a.
Everything's the same.
Gray slate, kind of?
So the, the, the only difference between the, the solar panels is that the, the Luma, the original one, was a black, black tile, where this is a deep gray, it's a, they call it Okeechobee gray, because it comes from Florida, but it's a, it's a, it's a dark gray tile.
Is it, is it flat, as far as the finish on it?
It's flat, it's flat, very much flat, yeah.
Could I ask a quick question? What percentage, I, I, I should probably remember this from the earlier approval, but what percentage of the new building will be solar?
It's.
Or electrical rather than fossil fuel?
It, it's, it's, oh, I'm pretty sure we have everything electrical. Everything runs on electric, and there's a geothermal system that's for the community building, that's separate. But both buildings will have the solar panels on them, every face, except for the north face of the, of the roofs, all have solar panels in, in the other three directions. It, it, it will produce quite a, quite a, a nice amount of, of power, that will probably run the air conditioning and the, the heating most of the year. And we, we're trying to see with the electrical company if there's any extra power, if we can use it for the other buildings on the campus, that we're still trying to work out, based on metering and other issues.
Um, to, just to be clear, the approved lot coverage was permitted by zoning, and now with the bathroom, it's still permitted by zoning.
Yeah.
So, so it was always governed by zoning, the, the change doesn't, you're not increasing any waiver or anything?
It's a small change, so we're allowed twenty-five percent, we're with this additional bathroom, we're twenty-one point eight percent.
Your original approval was?
I can't remember exactly, it was probably like twenty-one point.
Twenty-one point, yeah, okay.
Seven five or something.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're adding about a hundred and fifteen square feet or something, yeah.
Commissioner Chris, what would the exterior cladding of the, of the single cabin toilet be? What's it, it's a brick or?
It's all brick, yes.
It's stone base, the same as the, what the rest of the building has, and then, and then brick on the facade.
So it's the same, same look, the rest of the building?
All the same materials, yeah.
Thank you.
Looking at your roof plan, are all of the sloped roof areas going to be this solar tile?
All of the roof, yes, except for the north-facing ones, all of them will be solar.
So what will the north-facing roofs receive?
It's, it's the tile, it's the, the concrete tile without the attached.
Same manufacturer, same concrete composition.
Everything, yeah. We're happier with this, because this is a proven roof system, where the Luma tile was something fairly new, and we weren't sure in terms of warranties, long-term, what was going to happen to this roof, here if the solar panels stop working, we still have a really good working roof that's been around for a very long time. It's installed in Florida, it survives hurricanes, it's a, it's a good system.
Commissioners, anything further? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Do I have a motion on fifty-seven South Avenue?
Move to approve, Commissioner Chris.
Do I have a second?
Second, Cass Event.
Thank you. Any discussion or deliberation?
Commissioner Chris will state reasons for the approval, I think it's always useful. I see the addition of the single cabin toilet as facilitating, facilitating public health and comfort for the resident, for the users of the facility. I see it as having a de minimis effect on coverage increase. The look will be the same as what this commission has already approved, so I see this as a de minimis change. And as regards the solar panels, I think the change in color, again, is a de minimis change, and that the applicant has stated that the functionality of the newly recommended, solar panels is simply a much more proven technology, I see that as an enhancement.
Anyone else, anything further? Okay, call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
John Eng, oh, John's, John's recused, and Mr. Knag is recused, Tom Benton?
Yes.
Christina Larson?
Yes.
Eric Knowles?
Yes.
Yes, approval, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda, everyone, railway station fence rules. All right, Sarah, you want to explain this one to us?
Sure, so, as the commission may or may not be aware, there is a fence on the corner of Elm Street and Park Street that's right up against the train station.
I think we're all aware of that.
Okay.
It's the one that the train goes through every four years.
It makes a great train stop.
You know, there are rules that govern who can place a sign on that fence, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is who maintains those rules, and they haven't really been discussed, I'm aware of, since ninety-one. And so I'm looking for some clarification from you all, because this has kind of just gotten passed down planner to planner, and we're all just, you know, interpreting the rules as we do, but, you know, I want to turn it back to you all, just because a, a question has come up, so I'm going to pull up the regulations now for you. Zooming in as much as I can. So essentially.
Where in the regs is this?
So this is, if you go to, this is not in the zoning regulations, if you go to the planning and zoning page on the left side where there are all the links.
Yeah.
There's a documents and forms tab, and you click on that. Documents and forms.
Documents, got it.
And then it opens you up to planning and zoning, there is a railway extension, station fence rules PDF. So particularly, items number four and seven in the regulations, no commercial signs of any nature shall be displayed, no sign shall be displayed for more than fourteen days prior to the event, and must be removed within forty-eight hours following the event. I'm looking for clarification specifically for the New Canaan Farmers Market. We are trying to determine if it is appropriate for them to be able to have a sign, essentially, they're requesting, for the whole farmers market season, because the event technically goes on for four months, five months. It's a community-oriented event, which is what's required in item five. And I'm just looking for clarification, typically, how we enforce everything is you're just allowed two weeks on the fence, if there's room on the fence, we'll let you renew it again, but if there's no room on the fence, you got to go. But it's typically, you know, things like, oh, there's a fundraiser for the, you know, New Canaan Community Foundation or something like that, so farmers market is a little bit of a different animal, so turning to you all for assistance in determining the proper enforcement.
Is the farmers market a 501(c)(3)? Or is it a commercial entity?
I, my understanding is it's a commercial entity.
Yeah. Which number four says no commercial signs of any nature should be displayed, that we're advertising essentially a, an event where all the vendors are commercial businesses.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the farmers market, don't get me wrong, but it's, it's a commercial business.
Would you be in favor of amending this rule, because it's A, in the community spirit, but not a 501(c)(3), are you suggesting that because you like it, and because it's commercial, we should change the rule?
I, I would disagree with that interpretation, we advertise the Mayfair on that sign. That's a commercial entity, it's a commercial event, it's a for-profit event.
It's a run by a charity, it's run by a church.
But it's a for-profit entity that comes in to run the Mayfair.
Some of the vendors there are for-profit, but the money.
All of the vendors there are for-profit.
Well, no, I would disagree, because I know there are, for example, the church sells food, and it, if the church is a charity, the church also sells books and bibles and other things, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not against that, I mean, again, because it's run by what is clearly a charitable operation, as a fundraiser, I would treat that differently.
In fact, it is, the St. Mark's thing is, is run by members of the parish, who subcontract with people to come in, but it's run by volunteers from the parish.
I would suggest that you have a church fair or some other not-for-profit, where there are selling tickets, you could say that's for-profit too, since they're generating cash, and they have vendors who are food vendors, and they have bartenders and all the rest, I, I would see that as different. The, because the, the ultimate beneficiary is a civic group or a charity, here, it's, it's not a charity. It's a.
But the, the guidelines as written do not require it to be beneficial to a charity, it says all signs should be for your New Canaan community-oriented activities.
It's the commercial signs above it that is.
I understand, but we can modify the, the rules. I mean, admittedly, the, the farmers market is a unique, a, a unique event in town, as it is in many towns, that is not replicated on many sites, it's a single-site, single-site event that runs from May through October. We could easily, in the fence rules, put an exception here for the farmers market, specifically.
Have you found this rule to be abused, by like a restaurant in town, or by, and, you know, an, an actual, you know, you think of like a for-profit, right?
No, never by a commercial business.
I would also know.
And it's, and it's worth noting that the farmers market has, from what I could tell when we were doing our little Google search, they've had signage up on that, on, on that fence since two thousand and eighteen, during the summer.
I am still cautious on, on what is generally, I would say is a commercial enterprise, admittedly, not one that is making a lot of money, but, also, they have one up for weeks and weeks at a time, sort of, I had, sign up for four months, I think, it's sort of pushing it, the signs now tend to be transitory for an event, it's, you know, a week or two or three beforehand, the event happens, the sign comes down, another sign comes up, so there, essentially, it's going to be taking up a lot of space, that it won't be available to others, and that, that concerns me.
I worry about the same thing, because whatever we rule here on, on that question will affect Summer Theater of New Canaan, the Carriage Barn, and others who have all season, they won't be the only ones, so we have to, and, I, I see the, the timing in not-too-distant future when all the real estate's taken up, with season-long signs, if we let it.
So what about, what if we told the farmers market, if we get past the commercial signs issue in number four, what if we told them, you can put your sign up for two weeks, after two weeks, it comes down, you get back in line, if there's space, you can go up, if there's not space, you can't, you know, like, just keep getting in line, and if there's space.
That's what, that's what we initially proposed to the farmers market, and then they asked that we come here and get clarification if they would be allowed to place it on the fence continuously.
So Sarah, who is, you know, who do you talk to? Who is, who, who is, yeah.
Who's the czar of this farmers market?
Sure, the woman who runs it, her name is Alexis Gazy, she has presented to the board of selectmen before for approval when it moved over to. She has presented to the Board of Selectmen before for approval when it moved over to, um, its current location at the lumberyard lot. She is who I have spoken to and she's, you know, she brought this to, um, the, um, she brought it over to Tucker to discuss if there, you know, to talk with the Board of Selectmen to see if the town wants there to be permanent signage. You know, somewhere on town property for the farmer's market. I don't believe that there is a desire for that. So I'm just trying to get clarification on the fence specifically and it's up to the farmer's market to, you know, figure out what happens if this doesn't.
So i- if, if left to my administrative stuff, I'd create an exception for community oriented, multi-vendor commercial uses. And I'd require them to pull their sign down periodically as suggested by, you know, Commissioner Nielsen. And that way they still get to be there. Maybe they miss a week, but, you know, that, that way, especially if it's community oriented, right? We don't have a lot of other examples.
So you're saying that is your interpretation of the current railway fence station?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I think that right now they're clearly in violation. I think we need to, I, I'm sorry. I thought we had reached already to the stage that we need to amend this.
Okay.
Also, the, uh, the prisoner runs at Gazy. There's also a Gazy Brothers Farm. Is she associated with that?
I'm not sure.
So there is a Gazy Brothers Farm, G-A-Z-Y?
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to point out that, uh, as a citizen, I look for, uh, new things on that board. What's going on right now? So I think the purpose is not, it, it is not permanent signs or even season-long signs. So at the very least, I'd like to see it moved around. And then the other way is to say if they want a permanent sign, then maybe they have a half-size sign. And, you know, and, and it's less prominent. But really, it comes down to the point of that whole wall is episodic, not permanent signs. So I, I would rather not see three or four season-long signs up there, even if they got moved around.
I would agree. I mean, that, that, people see that all the time. All the kids hang out there. That's where people put town information for just-in-time stuff. As soon as you make it a billboard, you can change the purpose of it.
I, I think the, I, I think Commissioner Benton, the term billboard is a very good one. If it's up for a long time and I'm sense, I'm sensitive to, uh, Commissioner Engel's comment that, you know, well, you're going to have the carriage barn, you're going to have all these other groups that do series of stuff all year round will want to have their permanent spot. And they just sort of change the event over time. They want to put one up once and then take it down and then put another one up eventually. But this kind of on and on and on and on.
So I, I'd like to turn this into a positive when you talk to her and say, well, the commission is, is generally not in favor of permanent signs. They would welcome May, May at the farmer's market, June at the farmer's market. That what we're interested in is, um, changing the sign, changing the message all the time. And we don't mind that they are, uh, uh, up there for four months. But it should be, um, in the spirit of episodic programming, not one message four months.
Okay.
It would seem most of them is Gazy is related to Gazy Brothers, which is a vendor there. So.
But, but our decision on this should be unrelated to who's asking or their commercial relationship.
Well, here we have just a clearly commercial relationship unless we want to junk the commercial relationship. And I, I don't want to turn that into a billboard as, as Commissioner Benton suggests.
Yeah, that we agree, but I'm, I'm just trying to get back to sort of the principal stage of this. Right, right now we have a problem. We need to fix it. So we deal with the commercial gap by saying community oriented, which I think that anyone would argue in New England community farm, farmer's market qualifies as. Similarly, if somebody were going to have a Christmas fair in the parking lot in the cold, we would think that would be okay, right? Even though it might, they might have commercial vendors. So to have that, the way I'd, I'd do this, it'd be take four, no commercial signs of any nature shall be displayed with the exception of community oriented, multi-vendor events, right? And that deals with that. And then the se- the second part of this is that they have to rotate signs and no sign can be on there in perpetuity, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree.
Oh, I just, I would just suggest that if you just strike number four completely and then you're really only looking at five. All signs shall be for New Canaan community oriented activities regardless of commercial or nonprofit status. But you don't add that, but you just leave it as is.
I'm still worried that's a slippery slope. You're going to get someone who said my, my business is community oriented.
But you've, but, but I guess the question is you haven't had any problems with this yet. So I feel like we're trying to solve for an ill that doesn't exist, right? Like.
Haven't. I'm worried, worried, I'm worried we're going to create one, which I just.
I, and, and not to be clear, but other than Sarah, I'm not sure many people know that these rules exist. So, right, if, if it was a problem, if it was, you know, New Canaan Chicken was up there or, you know, uh, you pick it was advertising and it was becoming obscene, then yeah, I think we, you know, it's a different conversation. But we're, we're trying to, to solve for a problem that really, I don't think, sounds like to me doesn't really exist yet.
Okay. I think I have what I need.
Okay.
I prefer your approach eliminating four rather than having conversations over who's profiting at St. Mark's and who's profiting at Summer Theater. And how, and, and how commercial versus how much 501(c)(3), just strike it entirely. Because we're not qualified to talk about who's profiting and in what degree.
We go, we go blind for to figure that one out.
But then, I mean, to the, to the counterpoint to that, if we eliminate number four, then someone, regardless of whether they're a commercial or not entity, will come in and say that I am a community oriented service.
But it's activity. The word clearly says activity.
Sorry, a community oriented activity.
Okay, so you have a restaurant that's going to have live music.
White Buffalo.
And, uh, we, it's a great band that, you know, the Beatles are coming back together or something like this. Isn't this a wonderful thing? And yeah, I'm not sure. I would want to have that up on the, on the fence.
Or, or some, yeah, or someone who wants to teach tennis or pickleball lessons on one of the town courts. Right? I mean, the, the, you know, the, the, removing that commercial line, I believe opens us to significant risk.
My, my view is if you want to have the farmer's market, and I don't want to have them permanently have space or anybody have permanent space, to say the, uh, just write an additional line in saying, uh, any, uh, farmer's market in town, um, would be allowed to do it and just leave it to that.
I don't think we should single out.
Okay. I realize the challenges of that, but.
I like arts, arts.
Yeah, I think that initial one, the art came up with suffices.
Which would be what again? Sorry?
No commercial, I did start up the screen, but a- after the no commercial, except community oriented activities. Such as farmer's markets or holiday fairs.
Multi-vendor community oriented activities.
Yeah, it's in the reporting, so I'll, I'll have the exact language.
Again, we're, we're trying to be careful and accommodating here. We're not trying to solve a necessarily, uh, a, a, a current problem because there isn't one. But we're just trying to refine the language so that we can accommodate the farmer's market.
B- based on, uh, conversations we've had here though, we, we got that no sign should be saved more than 14 days. Part of the event must be that. Do we want to tighten that up?
No.
Is that fine?
I think it's fine. I think it's clear.
14 days before May 1st and no more than 48 hours after October 31st.
The, the farmer's market could say, well, our event goes on for.
Six months?
Six months.
Yeah.
I would say it's not six months. It's six Saturday, Saturdays over six months. Because it's, each is an individual event. In my view.
So Sarah, are you going to police this and decide who goes up?
Well, so we, we have a sign.
Take down signs?
No, so we already do that. We have a sign-up sheet. People have to come and get an orange sticker and we write the dates. They're allowed to put it down and put it up. They have to place this sticker on the sign. And Steve and our assistant zoning inspector polices it probably once every three weeks. And we, we deal with the sign constant, or the signs constantly. It's.
There's a lot of signage.
The section about food is getting to me too.
And then Commissioner Radman, we need to add the agenda item to talk about, um, a May special meeting for what was missed tonight.
Yeah, so.
Don't pack up quite yet.
Because of the technicality on the posting of the meeting notice, the three items that we had in public hearing, 672 On Oak Ridge, 884 Smith Ridge and 72 Park Street, uh, those have to get pushed. Uh, and we're looking to find a date where we can hear those. The May hearing, uh, uh, May regular hearing is going to be pretty chock full of items already, including St. Luke's.
Mostly St. Luke's.
Sorry?
Mostly St. Luke's.
Mostly St. Luke's. So that's going to take up most of that meeting. So we're looking to do a separate special meeting to accommodate these three applications between now and the May meeting. So what availability do we have on rooms and spaces?
Sure. So, um, I guess the initial question or more just for reference, we can't have a meeting earlier than Monday, May 13th, just for noticing purposes. So it's really, when can we get a quorum the week of May 13th or the week of May 20th? Um, it looks like there, as an example, May 16th, there are no meetings scheduled, um, for the town meeting room, May 22nd is another one that's not, May 23rd. You know, if there are dates commissioners know that they cannot do.
Um, I am out of the country from the 14th through the 24th.
Okay.
So if we wanted to do something on the night of the 13th or, you know, we could do it the night of the 27th, the night before.
Memorial Day.
Oh, that's Memorial Day. That's right. We're not doing anything that day.
I have significant travel, which I've scheduled around this gap. I mean, we keep going back to these two-month meetings. It's getting really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll do, I mean, if we have hybrid, I'll do my best.
Okay.
I'm in, uh, I'm, I'm in, uh, Europe, uh, during the week of the, uh, 13th.
Okay, so May 22nd as an example, who is available on May 22nd?
Two people.
No, I see. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. But so Kent, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm a villain.
Is the 22nd versus the 23rd make a difference for you?
So we were planning to have a community workshop for, um, the POCD on the 20th. But we can move that if needed. If two meetings in one week is fine. But the 22nd and the 23rd are both open for this room.
I can't do the 23rd.
Okay.
Do you know, will any items be continued that we've opened yet? I mean, I'm getting, it's getting so hard because we have these continual things where, right, we go along and on.
The plan for the 22nd or the 23rd, let's say, would be to hear 72 Park Street, which is White Buffalo. To hear 672 On Oak Ridge and 884 Smith Ridge, which are the three special permit applications that we were meant to hear tonight that we were unable to. I, I can't predict if those would be continued or not, but we're not planning to, as an example, talk about St. Luke's.
No, I was, I was actually more concerned with the St. Luke's continuity.
We are, there is no intention, trying to make that as clear as possible, if anyone's still listening. We are not talking about St. Luke's on this special meeting. It would be only for the May 28th meeting.
Yeah, this, this special meeting is only for the three applications that were pushed tonight. One of them is the White Buffalo. One of them is, uh, 884 Smith Ridge, a residential. And, uh, other one was 672 Smith Ridge, again, residential.
The admittance, if he's ready, because we said, we might be ready for him in May. We don't want to put him on the 28th. We want to put him on the 2nd without.
They're coming back asking for reconsideration.
If he's ready.
Yeah.
That's a good call.
We'd hate for him to have to wait for St. Luke's to move.
Yeah, I would do that first.
Yeah, we have control over that.
Yeah.
So what are we going to do?
So May 22nd, I saw, I think, eight commissioners available.
22nd.
So I won't count you, Commissioner Larson.
You might be able to also get Chris Herring and, uh.
So I mean, that's, we need five and it appears we have seven.
You'll be fine.
And I may, I may be able to make it work. 22nd.
What time?
Um, we can do 7:00 PM if that is better.
4:00 PM for you?
Yes.
6:00 PM or so? Sorry.
Seven.
Shit.
Okay.
Did she say six?
She said seven.
Seven.
On May 22nd, DNC special meeting.
Yes.
And on the 28th, right?
Yes.
And will the 28th begin at 6:00?
Um, I would, we haven't decided, but I would, just based on the agenda, I would venture seven.
May 22nd, 17, done.
Okay, um, last item is just approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the March 26th meetings, uh, the 6:00 PM special meeting and 7:00 PM regular meeting. Does anyone, uh, had a chance to go through those? And you have any corrections or comments? Okay, I hear none. Do I, uh, I'll just call for unanimous, do we have an approval? Yay or nay? I see unanimous approval on the minutes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.